Is that for you, Hill?
Yeah.
It started on our agenda. I'll ask Randy Comer to lead us in a word of prayer. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting officially to order, and I'll ask Ms. Parks to call the robe.
Parker.
Here.
Gar.
Here.
Collins.
Yes.
Craigmore.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Neillor.
Here.
Orrick.
Here.
Christopher.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Jennifer.
Recognition of guests. First, Ms. Sharon Marlowe. And before, I know, we've got four, we've got five speakers slated on the agenda. I'll just remind everyone to be sure and address the, you address the chairman, and we'll ask, just, you know, to, no personal attacks or anything like that, and just address the chair. I know Sharon, I'm sorry. But you're recognized.
Thank you Chairman Parker. I don't know that the mic's on, but, okay. And, board members, thank you. I'm here to address the agenda item, your intent to begin a superintendent search. I'm usually here as a representative from the Campbell County Federation of Teachers because I am the president of the teachers' union. But tonight, I need to wear many hats. I'm a grandparent of a student in the school system. I'm an aunt, I'm a great aunt, I'm a cousin, lots of people, teachers and students. I want to start out congratulating all of you on a lot of the accomplishments that you've made. You've built buildings, you've built additions, you have done so much in the way of repairs and fixing things that our school system needed so badly. This board is responsible for doing all that. You've upgraded the schools, you've upgraded our heating and air, you've upgraded our sports facilities, you've extended a lot of benefits to our classified employees, and, and I want to thank you for that because it's a lot of things that, as a teacher, I see it every day, and I really appreciate it. I'm trying to look because I'm nervous. The most awesome thing you did, though, by far, is when you hired Mr. Poston as the Director of Schools. He has brought so much peace and so much unity to Campbell County schools. We've had six superintendents in the last 10 years. Some we loved, some we tolerated, some we were relieved when they left, and some we were rather overjoyed when they left. And if there's any county in the state of Tennessee or in this whole nation that really ought to have terrible test scores, it's Campbell County. We've not had much in the way of continuity when it comes to our leadership. We've had to jump from one boat to a life raft to another boat, and it has been a struggle. We've had to learn new personalities and what things this one wanted us to do, and then it changed, and what somebody else wanted us to do. And it's hard to do that. But, and I, I don't, Mr. Poston's not perfect. None of us are. And I'm sure that he's done things that he's, oh, I shouldn't have done it that way, just like I do every day of my life. But I'm, and I know he's not a savior, but I want you to know that he has healed so many wounds, he has calmed so many muddy waters, calmed so much stress. It was like a ray of sunshine that came into our county, and that is the truth from almost every teacher I've talked to. He brought back unity, and he brought back honesty. It's what our schools, our students, our parents, our teachers, and every other employee of the Campbell County School District needed, and we still need it. I do know, perfect or not, everything that Mr. Poston has done, he has had the best interest of our children, our parents, our schools, our teachers, the employees at heart. He's not mandated, he's not humiliated us, and I appreciate that. I work hard every day, and I don't always achieve what I'd like to achieve. But to be publicly humiliated over it is pouring salt into a wound that I never wanted in the first place, that I tried to avoid. Now, thousands of people, I looked on the poll on the radio site, thousands of people, they're voters in Campbell County. They feel the same way that I do when I say that we don't think you need to do a superintendent search. We think you need to keep the one that we have, and let us have some peace, and let us have school. You can spend months, or years, and thousands and thousands of taxpayer dollars, and you still won't find anybody that has as much experience, or empathy, or character as Mr. Poston. Thank you.
Thank you Sharon. Thank you Ms. Marlowe. Now, it's my privilege to call up two Campbell County High School students, Ms. Sarah O'Rourke and Whitney Sawyer. And just like I reminded Ms. Marlowe, I'll just remind you all like I'll remind everyone else, just be sure and address the chair, and, okay, you're recognized.
Okay, and like Mr. Parker said, my name's Sarah O'Rourke, and I'm a senior at Campbell County High School. And I mean, I know I was just in front of you guys a couple months ago, so I should be a familiar face. And what Whitney and I are here to do tonight is to represent not only our opinion on this matter, but the opinion of the student body of at least Campbell County High School. Right here, I have a petition that I know that high school students do not get to vote in the election of school board officials or etc., but we have almost 150 names that was signed in less than an hour of who thought that Mr. Poston should still be our Director of Schools. And that's saying a lot. I mean, a lot of kids, they'll say, "Oh, I don't like him because he doesn't let me out of school when it snows." But, I mean, these, almost 150 names have really, you know, cared about what's happening in this, in this school system, and I mean, that's making good citizens out of them. And I've been to a lot of school board meetings in my day, and this, if this many students and parents care about what's going on, obviously, you know, that's something that the board needs to take into consideration. And since Mr. Poston has been in the superintendent seat, I can personally say on a firsthand experience that the students and myself have felt like we've really had a voice in what happened at our school and to us. And if you go out of town and somebody asks you where you're from, you know, in Knoxville or wherever, and you say Campbell County, a lot of times, you know, that gets a negative reaction. I was in marching band for years and years and years, and when we went to other schools, and they knew it was Campbell County, you know, we kind of got a frown or a scowl. But I think in the past year and a half, we've really started to turn that around and get a positive connotation with this county's name. And a new director would mean it would be the fourth one in four years. And, I mean, let's just look at something that we all know about, UT football. You know, we've changed, they've changed coaches a lot recently. And you can't expect a championship team with a new coach. You have to let them heal the wounds that have been made by previous coaches, and then start to build on that. And all we ask the board to do is to look at this impartially, and to do what's best for the students and the people who elect them.
Whitney Sawyer?
Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is a progress, and working together is success. Henry Ford. This is the closest example I could find to bring together collectively the thoughts of the students, faculty, teachers, community leaders, and citizens I've had the opportunity to speak with about this over the last six days regarding our Director of Schools. My name's Whitney Sawyer, and I'm the student body president at Campbell County High School, but today I come expressing my own opinion in addressing you. Each and every one of these individuals has expressed a grumbling frustration aimed directly at the conduct of the school board members in regards to Mr. Poston's contract. That said, Mr. Poston's abilities have come under question. Well, who's really qualified to question? Not who's empowered, but who's, who's qualified. We as citizens have elected officials to represent us, our districts, and our wishes of those who lie within. I would like to ask the current board members respectively if they have the wishes of their said districts represented, or their own political agendas. If each and every one of you have done this, then you both have my respect and my apologies for having to listen to me. But I will say, in my short years, I've often seen leaders confuse activity with productivity. They want to be seen making a difference or leading a charge that they often don't stop to realize that they already have what they need. The key lies within the wisdom and the leadership to know that Rome wasn't built in a day. Therefore, how can a wounded community that's carried a black eye for decades receive nothing short of a miracle in just under two years? Test scores are important, but they are products of multiple teaching styles, personalities, and broken home environments, and so much more. We did not ask our school board to hire a savior, so please quit looking for one to make the task at hand easier. This isn't supposed to be easy because nothing worth having is, and we must give Mr. Poston enough time to shift from second to third gear before we consider bringing in another coach with an entirely different game plan. Most individuals I've spoke with are in overwhelming support of Mr. Poston's for reasons of his. I'm quoting, "Effective leadership, ability to communicate. We feel like we can all go to him with anything and everything, and he really cares. We are finally on the same page and ready to move forward. Things have fallen into place, but we really feel like this is someone who we're behind and want to move forward and advance our system. He's ethical, so I don't have to worry about asking for help. I mean, I don't feel like he would try to put someone in my position and assume by asking for help is a sign of inadequacy or weakness. He listened to me as a student. No one ever listens to me, not any of my other teachers." These are just some of the comments that I've gathered over the last week. In closing, I would humbly ask that you stop and think before you vote and realize that a vote to open a search is basically voting against Mr. Poston. You're voting to throw us back into first gear, starting all over again, and simply put, being the beginning to someone else's end. I challenge you to be the leader that you were elected to be. Don't give in to another voice other than your heart and the wisdom in your mind. In other words, don't follow lead with your vote. We finally have a Director of Schools with good moral character, integrity, and someone our community has immense honor and respect for. I refuse to let Mr. Poston, who I have the greatest respect for, be put in the same category as our former Director of Schools who left with nothing short of criminal charges. Yet, I'm sorry, but in some ways, it seems our former Director was treated with more respect. When you, when you cast your vote, myself, my family, and my friends will be paying attention along with many others. If you're in this room right now, and you're in favor of everything I've just stated in the renewal of Mr. Poston's contract, I'd like you to stand, and if you're standing, please raise your hand. I'm embarrassed that I have to defend Mr. Poston to my school board, who should know far better than me the very potential of our administration. However, let the record show.
Thank you Sarah, thank you Whitney, I appreciate it. Mr. Jim Slusher, you're recognized. Again, I'll ask that you keep your comments toward the chair, and you're recognized.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. The ancient Greek philosopher Socrates said-
Yeah, Mr. Slusher, if you'll speak into the microphone there, we can't hear you.
The ancient Greek philosopher Socrates said, "Education is the kindling of a flame, not the filling of a vessel." This holds as true today as it did then. We are a part of a free and democratic nation that has developed a comprehensive and enormous educational system for every citizen of this country, state, and county. No one is excluded, as was not the case in Socrates' time. We have before us tonight the proposition of determining the process to be used in selecting a Director of Schools for next year, and hopefully a number of years to follow. This is a very serious matter for the school board, as we have approximately 6,000 students enrolled in our public schools. The success of our schools is at stake. In my opinion, the beginning of this needed process is a part of your elected duty. Under your authority, you can open a search for a Director of Schools anytime the need arises. Tonight, I wish to give you my opinion on three specific instances that have occurred recently in our school system. Number one, test scores. Academic achievement goals. The statistics speak for themselves. Once a student gets caught in a bubble of underachievement, the exit for that student is difficult. Excellence starts at the beginning, not the end of the school years. The Campbell County ACT scores in the areas of English, math, reading, science, and reasoning for 2010, 2011, and 2012 are respectively 18.3, 18.3, 17.8. The state average was 19.2. Out of 117 schools in this state, we rank 99th. The benchmarks for ACT, college readiness in English, mathematics, readings, and science are respectively 18, 22, 21, and 24. Those are the benchmarks we're supposed to meet. Most colleges expect the average composite score desired to be at least 21. Remember where our score is. The elite schools are looking for 34. The University of Tennessee's admission data for 2011 reflects a composite score of 24 to 29. That's pretty high. Only 25% of the students at UT fall below 24. Ours is 17.8. Please remember, our composite score in 2012 is 17.8 again. This is appalling. In academic achievement grades for White Oaks Elementary, math, D. Reading language, F. Social studies, F. Science, F. The state average, B. Elk Valley Elementary, B, C, D, D. State average, B. Win Habersham Elementary, B, C, D, D. State average, B. Incident two. On 1/27/13, 2013, I made a public records request for information on the school's solar energy project. To date, I've received the following from Mr. Poston, and this was made by a school board member, Mr. Rector. There was no knowledge on the part of the director that the project was begun before all the approvals were received. How did they know they got the money before they started? The director did not request this project to be bidded. However, according to the director, the board and commissioners were given presentations. This does not constitute competitive bidding or soliciting for proposals. The director played no role in the architectural engineering of the solar panel project. EETN is working with MBI, which I understand is Michael Brady, to ensure all structural integrity issues are addressed. To me, this implies these issues were not complete, although the solar systems are currently being placed on the roofs.
Okay, now hold on just one second there. You can call me out of order if you want to, but we've got parents back here, it's got children in those schools, and if you're saying those schools are not safe-
I have not said that.
Well, that's what you said, you said-
No, I've read from my, that's exactly what you said.
Mr., Josh, you can call me out of-
Hang on, let's, let's limp in, let's limp in.
Well, Mr. Uh-
Mr. Parker.
Now, guys, listen up here. Now, this ain't gonna be a free-for-all, okay? We're gonna talk, and we're gonna talk like human beings to each other, okay?
Okay, Mr. Malakode is back here, you can call me out of order, I really don't care.
Mr. O'Rourke, if you'll just hang on till after Mr. Slusher finishes, I'll let you rebut him.
Okay.
Mr. Slusher?
Was your insurance carrier advised of this? Remember, we've got glass on roofs, we've got hail, we've got a lot of things that occur on roofs. Was this provided for? Many of the schools in our school system are aged, and their structural integrity must be certified. Are our schools gonna be safe with the weight of the solar panels on the roofs? What about the addition of wind, rain, ice, and snowstorms? Remember, students, staff, and public are in these schools. I wonder if some of these schools will still be open at the end of 15 years due to changing population demographics and possible school consolidation. You can bet that the bond debt will not go away.
If we can have order in the gallery, please.
Our school system is financial, yet we take on debt that adds no value to the educational process. Is this a wise use of our dollars? Did we get the best possible price for the solar panels? Who knows? I don't. Only competitive pricing can determine this. I agree that only TVA is the purchaser of electricity, but the purchasing of equipment is a different matter. Bid or no bid, some say it's not required by the law, some says it is. Did we get the best value for our money? Number three, a recent serious, serious personnel matter and how it was handled by the, by the director. I will not go into the details of that for the sake of privacy, but I think the school board knows what I'm talking about. Honorable school board members, you ran for election, and we elected you. You have a contract with the Director of Schools, but when you took the oath of office, you entered into a contract with the citizens of this county to provide the best schools possible. It is your responsibility to fulfill your contract. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. O'Rourke.
And, you know, I don't mind about, I'm not gonna discuss the financial part of it and the bidding, that's something the board can take up at the next meeting. But if these parents' kids are in harm's way because of the project, Mr. Malakode needs to address that. Would you please come up here and address that, please?
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, 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 wait.
Well, okay, then I asked for a recess, and if people wants to stay, can stay, and nobody else can leave.
Listen, listen, listen.
I ain't talking to you, Charles, I'm not talking to you.
Please, listen. Would you please have some respect for the chair? I'm not asking you to respect me as a person, I'm asking you to respect the chair. I'm sorry, this is a special called meeting that six people wanted, okay? There is a specific agenda, and I'm sorry, Mr. Malakode, you're not on the agenda. I can't let you, I can't let you speak. But, I want you, it's on the agenda for our next board meeting in February. Well, I mean, I can only do what the law says I can do, right? Is that legal?
Would you please stick around to the end of this meeting and maybe address the parents and the media for us, please?
Yes, that'll work.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tom Chadwell, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, members, Ms. Parks, counselor, I'll be a lot more brief than I'd intended to be tonight, just because the ladies who spoke before me were so comprehensive and eloquent. There's not a whole lot I can add, so I'll condense what I have to say just to my personal story. And I started working for the school board in 2009, so compared to a lot of people, I'm a relatively new employee. But I did experience the climax of the previous administration and the fallout of the changing of the guard, so to speak. And I know what that did to the morale among the teachers in Campbell County. I also had the experience during that time of kind of rotating between Jellico High School and Campbell County High School. I've worked at Campbell County twice now, and Jellico twice during that same time period. So I know most of the teachers, the secondary teachers in the county, and over the course of that time, have experienced most of their feelings in regard to the administration of the school system. And all I want to say tonight primarily is I've been amazed over Director Poston's tenure, at the calm and peace he's brought to the employee corps of Campbell County, particularly at the high school level. I was kind of shocked and stunned when the previous administration left as quickly and suddenly as it did. Very concerned about the selection process. I didn't know Mr. Poston at that time. I've had the pleasure and experience since then of spending some quality time with him, and that adds to the degree to which I'm impressed. But mainly what I want to say tonight, I've had a long, I'd say multiple careers, 12 years in the service, 15 years in the corporate world. I've been through a lot of changes of administration, a lot of changes of leaders and bosses. But all of my concerns have been put to rest by fellow employees, who said, "Just, just trust Mr. Poston, and things will be all right." And over the course of the last couple of years, things have been all right. And it's that trust and confidence. When we, when we lost our contract, and I say lost, I'm a union member, when we lost our contract due to changes in the legislature, our contract expired, we had no grievance procedure. I personally was concerned about that. I expressed my concern to fellow employees, and was told that Mr. Poston had said that if anyone had a problem, they could come see him. And, you know, that was good enough for the employees, for the teachers in Campbell County High School, and at Jellico High School. Just Mr. Poston's word was good enough. They could do without a written procedure, without a written policy, because they knew that Mr. Poston was a fair and honest man. And I'm just here to say that tonight, to add that to what the previous speakers had to say on his behalf, and I think we should be proud and happy to have Mr. Poston lead us as long as he will.
Next on the agenda is approve the agenda of the special called meeting on January 31st, 2013.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? I will say, I'll be voting against the approving the agenda tonight. I support Donnie Poston as Director of Schools. I don't see the need in going through this election process, and I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. That's why I'm not approving this agenda. As chairman, I refuse to call a meeting on my own. There's two ways to have a special called meeting. The chairman calls one, or six members of the board call one. I refuse to call a special called meeting because I believe in Donnie Poston as Director of Schools.
I have been in the schools. I've, I've got family in the schools. It's personal to me. It's personal, and I don't mean to break down. It's personal to me because I've got cousins in the system, I've got friends in the system, I've got-
Next on the agenda is approve the agenda of the special called meeting on January 31st, 2013.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I will say, I'll be voting against approving the agenda tonight. I support Donnie Poston as director of schools. I don't see the need in going through a selection process, and I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. That's why I'm not approving this agenda. As chairman, I refuse to call a meeting on my own. There's two ways to have a special called meeting. The chairman calls one, or six members of the board call one. I refuse to call a special called meeting because I believe in Donnie Poston as director I have been in the schools. I've, I've got family in the schools. It's personal to me. It's personal, and I don't mean to break down. It's personal to me because I've got cousins in the system, I've got friends in the system, I've got friends who teach in the system who give their all, day in and day out, for the betterment of our kids in Campbell County. So when I vote no tonight on approving this agenda, I'll be voting against discussing the process for the director of school selection, because in my opinion, we have a fine director, and he deserves at least one more year.
Any further discussion? Madam Clark, call the robe.
Parker?
No.
Burr?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Heel?
No.
Lawson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oritt?
Hell, no.
Remember, boys. You know we voted you in. We voted you back out.
Absolutely right. I don't know.
Wilson?
No. Ask the house.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. Five, five, motion fails. Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Malakot's gonna come up and address this issue about this solar panel. Come here, Mr. Malakot. Would you please tell us if our kids are in harm's way?
Can I, can I have everyone's attention? We are adjourned. We are adjourned, and so we are adjourned. People are free to leave if they like. Board members are free to leave if they like. The public's free to leave. Mr. Malakot, though, is gonna adjourn, but the public can stay and listen to Mr. Malakot with the solar panels.
Mr. Malakot. Thank you, thank you. My name's Mike Malakot, and I'm born and raised here in Campbell County. I have grandchildren in our school system. Uh, where's it turn on at? Hello? Oh, okay, okay. Yes, my name's Mike Malakot, and I am from here in Campbell County. I have grandchildren in the school system, and Robbie is my associate. We own a company, EETN, and we're putting solar on the schools here in the county. And I think it was addressed that, you know, that was unprofessional, unsafe, this and that. I'm just letting you know that it isn't, and here's Robbie with some of the comments, because do you think I would put my grandchildren and your all's children and my employees' children at harm? No. Under no way, shape, form, or fashion, I think this is a witch hunt to get at Mr. Poston. It's all it is. And it has us drawn in the middle of it, and I personally don't appreciate it, and what we're trying to do is for the benefit of this county.
I'm the president of Efficient Energy of Tennessee. The company is doing the solar. I am the reason that Mr. Poston couldn't provide the documents to Mr. Slusher by the time he requested. I was out of town, so I couldn't get Mr. Poston the documents to provide. Those documents will be provided to him tomorrow. Just so you know, with respect to your children's safety, we did do the engineering. Michael Brady is doing final engineering on the roof structures, so we can provide those documents, but rest assured, the engineering has been done. I've got a binder with tens of thousands of dollars worth of engineering that was done to make sure that these systems are safe for your kids.